Is Madam Clerk? Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Councilmember Vaccaro?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani?
Here.
And Mayor Moi?
Here. And tonight for our invocation, we'll have Pastor Christian Bravo from Liberty Church. There you are, Christian. Hi.
Good evening. Let's bow our heads and pray. For the God we gather here together in gratitude for the opportunity to serve our beloved city of Fairfield. We ask for your divine guidance and wisdom as we embark on the important decisions that lie before us. May we always strive to act with integrity, fairness, and compassion, keeping the well-being of our community at the forefront of our minds. Grant us clarity to see the need of all our citizens and the courage to face the challenges that arise and the strength to make us a tough old decision. Help us to work together in unity and respect, value each voice and perspective, so that our collective effort may foster peace, prosperity, and harmony in our city. Bless our deliberation today, and may our actions reflect your love and justice. We pray for the continued blessing of Fairfield and on its people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you pastors. Good seeing you. And tonight, we're going to have the City Manager lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Surprised, surprised.
Everybody join me in pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And now we're going to go ahead to council reports. I'm going to start with you, you next to me.
Me?
Yeah, Councilman Doug.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a council report. I was on a little mini-vacation prior to that, and I apologize for not being here on the dais. I hear I missed a good meeting, but I don't have a report for you this evening.
You can watch it on video if you want to. It was riveting. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to be in the chamber this evening or for watching from home. We always have a better meeting when you're a part of it, so thank you for that. And we got started a little late, so I'm going to forego my report for this evening, so we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Panduro?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just say thank you. We had an Adopt a Street program cleanup this past Saturday, as I've shared in the past myself, and RPD has adopted all of North Texas, from Air Base all the way down to Travis. And so we had an Adopt a Street cleanup this past Saturday, and we had a good amount of staff and family and community show up. So we did a great job cleaning up, and it's always just great to see our young folks out there and our families out there together as community, helping clean up the city. And then I just wanted to share, I know I have shared with my colleagues in the past, that I was a part of the WELL Fellowship Program. So WELL stands for Water Education for Latino Leaders, and myself and the mayor of Susan City, Alma Hernandez, both attended. And it was a six-month program, and we just concluded about two weeks ago. And so we were exposed to the California water history and governance, infrastructure, finance, and impact of the climate change on the water supply and quality. And so for the last six months, we've been traveling up and down the state, learning about different water crises happening in a lot of our different neighboring cities and communities, both all over the state, actually. And we also got to hear from different policy experts, as well as hear from folks that are getting impacted by these crises. And so what's next after this is now we're going to be hosting, Alma, myself, and Assemblywoman Lori Wilson's office will be hosting a water legislative workshop. And so more to come on that, but I hope that all my colleagues can attend, as well as any of the public that would like to learn more about what's going on with regards to water issues impacting our region. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and congratulations on completing that. Look forward to the workshop. Councilman Vaccaro?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, so I'll be reading the proclamation for LGBTQ Pride Month later, and I was a part of, myself, Councilman Tonison, and Councilwoman Panduro were there, along with the mayor, when we raised the flag the other day. And I think this is something that some of us have been pushing for a long time, and I know, I'm glad that it's been part of our, you know, every year now for the last few years that we've been able to do this. I know I'm proud of that. So I'm looking forward to reading the proclamation and probably saying a couple of other words about it. And welcome everybody, too. It's always glad to see everybody here. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Tonison, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just giving a shout out to everyone. Our farmer's market continues on Thursdays from 3:00 to 7:00. That'll be continuing into, I believe, September. And then I'm sure other council members went, but we were at the Trucks of the Trade this weekend. Kate Patrice had a booth there. She's going to have signage soon. But it was packed. Those kids were, they were 50-deep on some, probably the fire trucks. But it's just a shout out to Parks and Rec, and, you know, Juanita Johnson did a great job, and as usual, Juan's out there and the other staff that's out there. It's a long day for them, so I just wanted to give a shout out to them. And then I went to the, I stopped by the Rev Up Car Show, the Royal Rev Up Car Show at the Armio parking lot. And we all got other things to do, so we had a mayor's selection, and the mayor wasn't available, but Mayor Marshall was, I mean, Chief Marshall was. So thanks, Dan, for coming in and filling out in for us, and you picked the best one. So that's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you. And that's right, you've been demoted to mayor, sir. All right, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I want to talk a little bit more about Trucks of the Trade, just because it was so much fun. Yes, I had my first city council pop-up booth, and my mission was to meet as many of the community as possible. You know, we appreciate when the community comes here, or you recognize us and talk to us in the grocery store, but, you know, I want to, and we go to a lot of events, but to just be there and just be ready and open to any and all conversations, that was pretty amazing. Thank you for hanging out with me, and then you kind of worked the area and left me. And, but, here's the thing. So I got to talk to the community, but what I thought was pretty amazing was all of the different departments that were out there. So it was fire, it was the police, it was the Solano sheriffs, it was transportation, it was FAST. They had their electric bus out there, they had their small, I forgot what it's called, the rider, the hoop?
Fast Connect.
The Fast Connect, the little smaller vehicle out there. And just, oh, and of course, MOD had their really good-looking unit out there that goes out to different locations and can do live feeds. So not only did I get to get into the vehicles and look around and things, but I was able to talk to the different departments, people that, you know, just kind of work in these departments, and just asked them anything that came to my mind. And had them, for example, with FAST, they were able to help me pull out my phone, do a ride bingo, and we literally booked a ride and then canceled it. And then to find out that now, in my area, District 1, Cordelia and Green Valley, I can go all the way to the FAST Transportation Center, or here, I can take that vehicle here if I wanted to. I think it'd be a problem getting back home, I might need a ride.
On an electric bus?
Well, no, on a little. So it was just amazing, and it was just a great extension of community and had a lot of fun. And I, you know, not trying to pin you guys to things, but I don't know, I think we should do pop-ups more. When, you know, when time is available, because I know we tend to it, different events, but if we had like a sign that says, you know, "Chat with City Council", like, it's amazing what all type of information we get. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I love your energy out there. It's very good. Love it. Okay, so I wanted to, I just have two things. I have a lot more, but I'm going to keep it shorter. Last night, the City Manager and I went to the Senior Center, the Adult Recreation Center, to meet our exchange students from here that are going to Japan, our ambassadors, to go over there to our sister city. And it was really, really exciting, fun, great young people. They're going to represent us really well. I got to pin them with, you know, our city pins, so they would wear that when they go over. And they began having Japanese lessons, and they're going to give little speeches like we get here when they come. They are brave, and they're going to go over there and give a short speech about themselves to the Japanese mayor. And do they call it a council? We'll call it the council, yes, over there. And so it was really exciting, really, really, really great picks this time. And I want to thank Anna for all of her work in a guile on this. She does a bang-up job, so looking forward to them coming back here and telling us about it when they get back from Japan. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, last week, the Vacaville Reporter had a story about the Solana County Water Agency suing, and because of the state wanting to take 75% of Lake Berias's water. That was a wholly inaccurate article. We, the Solana County Water Agency did file in court an action, because by law, since the early 1900s, you have to get our water rights from the federal government. So we're not suing anybody. In a separate action, the state is still moving forward with wanting to take 75% of Lake Berias's water. And we may ultimately sue, but we're still in the conversation space with them. And it's a little complicated, and it's not. What's not complicated is if it happens, it'll be the end of agriculture in Susan Valley. It'll mean that we will not be able to build one more house in Fairfield, California.
We got started a little late, so I'm gonna forego my report for this evening so we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Pandora?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just say thank you. We had a Adopt a Street program cleanup this past Saturday, as I've shared in the past myself, and our PD has adopted all of North Texas from Air Base all the way down to Travis. And so we had a Adopt a Street cleanup this past Saturday, and we had a good amount of staff and family and community show up. So we did a great job cleaning up, and it's always just great to see our young folks out there and our families out there together as community, helping clean up the city. And then I just wanted to share, I know I have shared with my colleagues in the past, that I was a part of the WELL Fellowship Program. So WELL stands for Water Education for Latino Leaders. And myself and the mayor of Sussin City, Alma Hernandez, both attended. And it was a six-month program, and we just concluded about two weeks ago. And so we were exposed to the California water history and governance, infrastructure, finance, and impact of the climate change on the water supply and quality. And so for the last six months, we've been traveling up and down the state, learning about different water crises happening in a lot of our different neighboring cities and communities, both, well, all over the state, actually. And we also got to hear from different policy experts, as well as hear from folks that are getting impacted by these crises. And so what's next after this is now we're going to be hosting, Alma, myself, and Assemblywoman Lori Wilson's office will be hosting a water legislative workshop. And so more to come on that, but I hope that all my colleagues can attend, as well as any of the public that would like to learn more about what's going on with regards to water issues impacting our region. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and congratulations on completing that. I look forward to the workshop. Councilwoman Vaccaro?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first of all, so I'll be reading the proclamation for LGBTQ Pride Month later, and I was a part of, myself, Councilman Tonnison, and Councilwoman Pandora were there, along with the mayor, when we raised the flag the other day. And I think this is something that some of us have been pushing for a long time. And I know, I'm glad that it's been part of our, you know, every year now for the last few years that we've been able to do this. I know I'm proud of that. So I'm looking forward to reading the proclamation and probably saying a couple of other words about it. So, and welcome everybody, too. It's always glad to see everybody here. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Tonnison, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just giving a shout out to everyone. Our farmer's market continues on Thursdays from 3:00 to 7:00. That'll be continuing into, I believe, September. And then, I'm sure other council members went, but we were at the Trucks of the Trade this weekend. Kate Patrice had a booth there. She's gonna have signage soon. But it was packed. Those kids were, they were 50-deep on some, probably the fire trucks. But it's just a shout out to Parks and Rec, and, you know, Juanita Johnson did a great job. And as usual, Juan's out there, and the other staff that's out there. It's a long day for them, so I just wanted to give a shout out to them. And then I went to the, I stopped by the Rev Up Car Show, the Royal Rev Up Car Show at the Armel parking lot. And we all got other things to do, so we had a mayor's selection, and the mayor wasn't available, but Mayor Marshall was, I mean, Chief Marshall was. So thanks, Dan, for coming in and filling out in for us, and you picked the best one. So that's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you. And that's right, you've been demoted to mayor, sir. All right, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I want to talk a little bit more about Trucks of the Trade, just because it was so much fun. Yes, I had my first city council pop-up booth, and my mission was to meet as many of the community as possible. You know, we appreciate when the community comes here, or you recognize us and talk to us in the grocery store. But, you know, I want to, and we go to a lot of events, but to just be there and just be ready and open to any and all conversations. That was pretty amazing. Thank you for hanging out with me, and then you kind of worked the area and left me. And, but, here's the thing. So I got to talk to the community, but what I thought was pretty amazing was all of the different departments that were out there. So it was fire, it was the police, it was the Solano sheriffs, it was transportation, it was FAST. They had their electric bus out there, they had their small, I forgot what it's called, the rider, the hoop?
Fast Connect.
The Fast Connect, the little smaller vehicle out there. And just, oh, and of course, MOD had their really good-looking unit out there that goes out to different locations and can do live feeds. So not only do you get to, did I get to get into the vehicles and look around and things, but I was able to talk to the different departments, people that, you know, just kind of work in these departments, and just asked them anything that came to my mind. And had them, for example, with FAST, they were able to help me pull out my phone, do a ride bingo, and we literally, like, booked a ride and then canceled it. And then to find out that now, in my area, District 1, Cardoia and Green Valley, I can go all the way to the FAST Transportation Center. Or here, I can take, I can take that vehicle here if I wanted to. I think it'd be a problem getting back home, and I might need a ride.
On an electric bus?
Well, no, on a little. So it was just amazing, and it was just a great extension of community, and had a lot of fun. And I, you know, not, I'm trying to pin you guys to things, but I don't know, I think we should do pop-ups more, when, you know, when time is available. Because I know we tend to attend to it, different events, but if we had, like, a sign that says, you know, "Chat with City Council", like, it's amazing what all type of information we get. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I love your energy out there. It's very good. Love it. Okay, so I wanted to, I just have two things. I have a lot more, but I'm gonna keep it shorter. Last night, the city manager and I went to the Senior Center, the Adult Recreation Center, to meet our exchange students from here that are going to Japan, our ambassadors, to go over there to our sister city. And it was really, really exciting, fun, great young people. They're gonna represent us really well. I got to pin them with, you know, our city pins, so they would wear that when they go over. And they began having Japanese lessons. And they're going to give little speeches, like we get here when they come. They are brave, and they're gonna go over there and give a short speech about themselves to the Japanese mayor, and, do they call it a council? We'll call it the council, yes, over there. And so it was really exciting, really, really, really great picks this time. And I want to thank Anna for all of her work in a guile on this. She does a bang-up job, so looking forward to them coming back here and telling us about it when they get back from Japan. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, last week, the Vacaville Reporter had a story about the Solana County Water Agency suing, and because of the state wanting to take 75% of Lake Barrios's water. That was a wholly inaccurate article. We, the Solana County Water Agency did file in court an action because by law, since the early 1900s, you have to, to get our water rights from the federal government. So we're not suing anybody. In a separate action, the state is still moving forward with taking, wanting to take 75% of Lake Barrios's water. And we may ultimately sue, but we're still in the conversation space with them. And it's a little complicated, and it's not. What's not complicated is if it happens, it'll be the end of agriculture in Sussin Valley. It'll mean that we will not be able to build one more house in Fairfield, California, or anywhere in the county. And house prices will be even higher, and that we will no longer probably have yards. It'll be, it will be very, very, very difficult. So we are still working on it, and staff from the Solana County Water Agency literally works on it daily. And so if anybody out in the public or here has questions about it, you can call me. The Water Agency is really good about talking about it. And we had the presentation here, too. You could look at that on our video. Was that a couple meetings ago? But anyway, you all need to know, and there's one other thing. I think it's on our website, isn't it? That people, if you oppose the state taking 75%, you could go to our website, right?
Yeah, Fairfield.ca.gov/Bay Delta Plan.
Bay Delta Plan. And there's a letter there that you can just go ahead and sign and send it over to us, and then we'll get it out to the state. It's just five governors and appointees, that's the water board, you know. They're the ones making this decision. So we need to apply pressure, and that's the way to do it. So thank you, David, and that's all I have. Do you have a report tonight, Mr. City?
No, Madam Mayor, no report tonight, and no changes to the agenda.
All right. And how about you, Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay, and Madam Clerk?
I don't have a report either, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, all righty then. So now we're gonna go ahead and move to presentations. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Proclamation declaring Pride Month presented by Councilmember Vaccaro to Solano Pride Center.
Members of the Pride Center want to come up? So before I read this, I just wanted to say that, you know, when I moved here from New York in 1980, I lived in San Francisco. And, you know, I had a, worked with a lot of my friends that were gay. And it was really, it was a great city to live in, a great time. And then the AIDS epidemic hit. And it was like, it ravaged the city. And it was a terrible thing to see, and I lost a lot of friends. I know my wife lost friends. And it was just, like I said, to live through that and see it, you know, on a day-in, day-out basis, was, it was really hard. So I'm really proud to read this proclamation. I know I've read it the last few years, and it's something that, you know, I've kind of pushed for in the past. So let me just get on with it and read it, so I can hand it over. So, Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, June 2024. Whereas 55 years ago, in June 1969, a riot at a Manhattan gay bar, the Stonewall Inn, in retaliation to a police raid, precipitated the modern fight for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer rights. Whereas because of acts of courage from those who demanded justice and from those who quietly pushed for progress, our nation has made great strides in recognizing what these brave individuals long knew to be true in their hearts, that love is love, and no person should be judged by anything but the content of their character. And whereas 2015's landmark Supreme Court decision was a historic victory for LGBTQ Americans, guaranteeing marriage equality in all 50 states, and ensuring dignity for same-sex couples, and therefore, all couples. And whereas for every partnership that was not previously recognized under the law, and for every American who has denied their basic civil rights, this monumental ruling instilled newfound hope, affirming the belief that we are all freer when we are all treated as equals. And whereas despite this extraordinary progress, LGBTQ Americans still face discrimination simply for being who they are, and there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every American. And whereas in memory of the 49 victims of the 2016 Pulse nightclub massacre in Orlando, transgender individuals murdered for who they are, and a history of violence against our community, it is ever more important that we continue to push for equality, protections, and acceptance of LGBTQ people everywhere. And whereas 2024 is the 26th year of the Solana County's LGBTQ community coming together to show our pride in Solano County through service and support of the LGBTQ community and the organization known as the Solano Pride Center. And whereas during LGBTQ Pride Month, as we wave our flags of pride high and march boldly forward in parades and demonstrations, let us celebrate how far we have come and reaffirm our steadfast belief in the equal dignity of all Americans. And whereas the city of Fairfield proudly stands with the LGBTQ community of Solano County and with all communities who struggle for human rights, acceptance, visibility, safety, and in the quest for full equality under law. Now therefore, I, Catherine Katmoy, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month in Fairfield. Thank you.
It looks just like a few paragraphs of words. But if you've read the newspaper today, you know that there are some cities that have refused to tell our history and to refuse to be a part of making this county a safe place for our community. I'm Will McGarvey. I'm the new executive director of the Solano Pride Center, and I'm happy to be able to serve in this role. I was a Presbyterian minister for 20 years and retired from that work to be able to do this civil rights work because of the threats that have been coming against our community, especially here in Solano County, and especially in our eastern portions of our county. So this means a lot. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
Hi, everybody. I'm Christina Saldaña. I'm the prevention, HIV Prevention Manager for Solano Pride Center. This, in no question, makes the community happy, but it also encompasses the mental health aspect of our community. Solano Pride Center does everything it can, it does everything it can to combat stereotypes and stigma, which can result, which, by the way, consumes the community, the stereotype and stigma, and can result in stress and even suicides. So anything that you can do to lessen that stigma? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Thank you.
No, it didn't. Is it, yeah. Better, you guys are in the front, and we're in the back.
You guys ready? Get ready, and one, two, three, one, two, three. Okay, and then two more.
Two more, okay.
Get ready, and one, two, three, and one, two, three.
One more.
One, two, three.
Tom, tom, tom.
Okay, thank you very much.
Too funny. Thank you very much, and thank you, Councilwoman Vaccaro. So now we're gonna turn to public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. When joining via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press *9 on your phone to request to speak. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. Our first speaker is Jeff Trager, to be followed by George Kennedy.
Hello, Jeffrey.
Madam Mayor, how are you, members of the city council? This is what's going on at the Downtown Theater and music-wise here in Fairfield. On the 13th of July, the Missouri Streets Theater's adaptation of Beauty and the Beast is on the 13th. On the, and you can get your tickets by going to downtowntheater.com. That's downtowntheater.com, and, you know, their shows are excellent, so make sure you get your tickets. This Friday, we're continuing the summer music series on the county lawn. We've got the Latin rock band called Los Coachinos. And that starts at 6:00. So I'd like to see as many people out there as possible. And then next, two weeks later, we're out at Vintage Green Valley and off of Mangels, so you can go out there and check it out. And so there'll be shows every two weeks all the way into September. We kind of started off on a strange note. We were out at Ridgeview when they shut down the freeway. I don't know if you remember that on a Friday night. And I'm standing out there, and I'm yelling at two, I'm yelling at my band going, "Where are you?" And I'm yelling at the guy who's bringing the stage and the generator. I don't know what's going on, and I'm just... And I wasn't exactly supposed to be, I had just gotten out of the hospital and not supposed to be yelling at people. So it was very interesting. But anyway, that's what's going on. So please, if you can make it down there, everybody. There's a lot of, a lot of great things coming this summer, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Commissioner Kennedy?
Madam Mayor, City Council members, George Kennedy, resident of Fairfield. Wearing two hats today. First one, as a resident. I want to talk about Parks and Recreation Department and the absolutely amazing job Saturday at Trucks of the Trade. To say it was packed is a minor understatement, because when we left, there wasn't a single parking place on the west side of Business Center Drive, and people were still trying to come. It was just the kids, there wasn't a tier screaming by kids. They were all so excited, getting on the trucks, having their pictures taken. It was just an absolutely amazing day. So thank you to the city and Parks and Rec for putting on another amazing event. Now, I'm gonna put my other hat on as president of the Solano County Fair Association. Our fair, coming up next week, the 13th through the 16th, it is our 75th, our Diamond Jubilee Fair. And it's at the County Fairgrounds in Vallejo, and we have a jam-packed week, four days, with our headlining band this year will be Confunction on Friday night. Saturday, we've got Queen Legion. And Sunday is Hispanic-Latino Day, with an entire program around the Hispanic and Latino heritage that we do every year. Thursday is Ag Day. $1 admission on Thursday, so everybody can come, take part in the ag, because we have programs for students in the county to learn about agriculture in this county, because that's what we are. And Friday, as I said, is Confunction, but it's also Super Friends Day for our special needs community, where we will have brides, and we're gearing everything, a lot of special events for them that day. Saturday is the Junior Livestock Auction, where the kids throughout the county bring their animals, and quail, and turkeys and such, and bring those to be auctioned off, which they use that money, you know, to further their education needs, to self-fund themselves. So we encourage you highly to come out and to take part in that. Donations are gladly accepted for the Junior Livestock Auction. You can send it to the Solano County Fair Association to help support these kids. So Car Show, Chele Car Show, will be Saturday and Sunday, two days this year. It's always a big hit. So with that, I'll end with Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night, 9:15 p.m., Pyrotechnics and Drone Show. So we're gonna have an amazing drone show this year with several hundred drones each night. So it's a great event, so thank you.
Sounds fantastic. I just want to tell you something. You know, my husband raised sheep his whole life. And he did not use his takings from selling his lambs, not for education. He bought BBs. I just thought you should know. Anyway, sorry, Ken Man. Yeah, okay. The first gentleman, naughty, 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 yes.
It was okay in those times.
But it's different now. I know the kids now are much better.
Yeah, they're amazing. We're already getting letters from the kids, excited about it, so.
It's a great, great program, really is.
Come out and join us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Vince Gusan de, to be followed by Joseph Joyce.
Hi, everyone. Madam Mayor, Council, staff, remember me last week? You know, I, those at home that don't know, but I've been a businessman in this community over 40 years now. All that time, I've been a community steward, been involved in youth sports, softball, baseball, basketball, football, you name it. I've served on a lot of foundations and community projects with many of you here and in the back here. Being a businessman, you have to get things done in a timely manner. Being on this Rockville Citizens Advisory Committee, ARCAC, I'm finding out why you don't see a lot of folks like myself, being a businessman, sitting on these committees. For us, time is money, and you never have any of it to waste. It's quite frustrating on the pace of the way things seem to be moving along. But I don't quit anything I get into, so I'm gonna give it my best while I'm here, there. With that, I want to talk to you about your decision from last week for not allowing the Class 1 e-bikes into the park. The ARCAC committee did their due diligence and brought the science and the facts as to allowing e-bikes into the park, and it showed no real impact. The real truth of the matter, it's not gonna make a bit of difference up there. They're already there. They keep coming. And the prudent thing would have been to vote them in and look at it after six months, but we decided not to. There was a couple of issues that were addressed, and one was the status of A, or the Ranger. And it's been two weeks. I know in the business world, two weeks is a lot of time. And I'd just like to know where we are with that issue, what we've done between now and two weeks ago, to find out the status of it. Because, of course, they say there's several other issues there that Ranger needs to be on top of. So I'd like to know if there's been any movement on that, and if not, I'll be back next week to find out if there's any movement on it.
I appreciate you. I'll ask the city manager if there's any update.
No update. It's a workers' comp case and a personnel matter.
That, I know that doesn't fly straight in your, in business.
Yeah, well, I mean, probably for anyone, it's just...
Well, yeah.
You know, it's like the whole city is being handcuffed by this situation. I mean, I don't know anybody that has a job for 10 months. we need to get something moved on in that department.
Well, I'll move it up on my list, because I have not done anything about it, Vince, myself, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for reminding me. You can text me every day if you want to.
Well, thank you for listening to my.
Always, and thank you for hanging in there. I get it.
Real quick, you're going to, on the next agenda item, I'm bringing in the idea of bringing, stocking that pond up there with fish, so we can get more families and kids up there fishing. So I don't know exactly what, all the permits and everything, but it's coming.
Right on, thank you.
So you have two fair board members here today.
Oh, we're special.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for giving me the time. We are from the Solano County Fair. It's in Vallejo. It's constantly called the Vallejo Fair. It is not the Vallejo Fair. It belongs to all of Solano County, and we're here to reclaim that title. I invite you all to be there. I know you all got invitations. Please respond. Bring your spouses, bring your significant others. One of the days that George didn't go over is, we have Out at the Fair, which celebrates pride in the LPGQ communities. And so that's there. We will also, the junior livestock is a big part of the communities there. I sent out a very ungracious beg to all the council people. I hope that you guys get an opportunity to respond. Also, campaign signs, I know all of you guys are familiar with these, if you'd like one. They were $75. They're free tonight, okay? So I'd love for you guys to have one.
I'll put one out on Rockville Road.
I think most of you guys have the metal.
No.
Yeah, I got a couple.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just had a handful in the car. Anybody else would like one, let me know. So that's the big pitch. Also, Juneteenth in Fairfield will be here. I'm an active supporter of that. I know that most of you are, will be there. We spent a lot of money on that event. I'm glad that the city of Fairfield is in. I'd like to make sure that it's there to support that event. I will be actively at the fair, but I'll be back and forth within that. Fourth of July, my car club spends a lot of time here in the community. We do events, right? We're not just a car club. We're here to support the community in everything that we do. We support the council in everything that we do in the city. And we appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kayinda Joyce Scott.
Hello, City Council, Mayor. I'd like to talk about ID in Fairfield. I came to Fairfield in '77, graduated from Vandon in '80. I've had a very crazy history in Fairfield, with mental health, and violence, and ID. A friend of mine was trying to get ID. Usually, they tell you, go to 600 something another on Union Street, where you pick up paperwork, then you can get ID by coming here. That's not true. You can't get the paperwork from 600 whatever, Union Street. When you come here, a lady named Brenda Collier, you know, she had someone working the front desk, and I asked her, well, if you don't have ID, how do you get ID so that you can make progress in Fairfield? Do you know that you can't do that? That's not to be done here in Fairfield. So we went to social security, we went to different places. We were sent to try and get ID. You would think if you've been arrested in Fairfield, you should be able to get your ID from the police station, because they have it. They said, "We don't do that." I didn't understand that. Because you have a copy of that person's ID, why can't you just give them a copy, so that they can do things around Fairfield? It's very difficult to be a minority still in Fairfield. When Mr. Price, as my English teacher, took me around California, I won different contests. Who am I? That's a contest I won with the Lions Club. Slavery and the Constitution, the IBPOE of the Elks. I did that. I spoke. I speak a lot, talk a lot. I miss Mr. Price. That was my heart, my English teacher. I don't understand what he did here, because when Mr. Price was here, I saw some changes being made. Now, I feel very disappointed, because as a minority, even here now, I can't get ID in Fairfield, and I've been here since '77.
Next, we have Rodney Smith.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council members. So I'm here to talk about, this is for a city attorney, this is document number 367279. 7279, but Madam Mayor, Council members, I'm here to talk about an elaborate quid pro quo, quick scheme, that the officers in the city of Fairfield are engaged in. It's a kickback scheme with the Roadrunner toll agency and the employees. So this is the way it goes. It's complicated, it's a lot of moving pieces, but let me get going, my time is evaporating. 23109A, whenever a peace officer is engaged, whenever a peace officer determines that a person is engaged in activities mentioned in paragraph two, speed contests, reckless driving on a highway, reckless driving on a parking facility, expedition of speed, that police officer has a right to arrest and take into custody that person, and to remove and seize the vehicle. Under 22852, the state of California said that person afforded the opportunity for a hearing. This case, so the Fairfield Police Department said that they're, no, you're not going to get a hearing. We have a seizure warrant under a 14602.7. They said they had an affidavit that bore reasonable cause. But the problem about it is this, though. It's a copy and paste document that they presented. It's a copy and paste. It's a scam that they're doing. They illegally seized vehicles without establishing the proper authority to do it. You never established, you denied me my hearing in the 2285, you didn't establish it there. And in the 14602.7, the impounded agency, within two working days, have to send a certified copy to the legal registered owner, informing the owner that his car has been impounded, and that they're going to send you a copy of the warrant. But even more so, I know this is malarkey, even more so, because the magistrate, they name dropped the Honorable Wendy Geddy out of Department 8. But see, even under the law in the state of California, Wendy Geddy has an obligation as well. She has to send a copy of the affidavit and the warrant to do it. So here we are, today. The police department has never established the validity to hold the vehicle, and in violation of constitutional laws. I will ask this body to look into it. I'm looking for a partnership. I'm not coming down here trying to start anything. I'm right about this, the law is on my side. Talk with the city attorney, please, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
And I'll be back each and every time. I like it here. Thank you all.
You're welcome to come.
I have no other speaker cards for general public comment, no hands raised online.
Alrighty, thank you. So now, we're going to go ahead and move to the consent calendar. Are there any public speakers on this?
I have a few public speakers for Agenda Item 9, and a couple for Agenda Item 11.
Okay, so nothing for, okay, nothing for the consent calendar, thank you. And there are no speakers online either, right?
Correct.
Okay. I've got my stuff all over this, so I can't see. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion unless, yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull what should be marked as Item 3.
Okay.
It's mistakenly marked as Item 8, but it should be Number 3 on the consent calendar, the abode contract.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
It should be Number 3 on the consent calendar. It's erroneously marked Number 8.
Resolution 2024-126 of the City Council, the city of Fairfield, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Fairfield and Abode Services for Unsheltered Homeless Street Outreach Services, presented by Samantha Burrows.
That's the one.
Yes. Okay, do you have some questions on that, or just do we have staff that could?
I have some questions on that, and just really, in general questions. This is a contract for homeless outreach, and Abode will presumably be working hand in hand with our homeless intervention team and other services that the city of Fairfield has put in place to service our homeless populations. And the city council has been really hands-on in terms of being engaged with what happens in our homeless community. Our police department has done an outstanding job in homeless intervention team activities, et cetera. So my concern, one of my concerns about this contract is that I don't believe Abode has made a presentation to the city council, have they, regarding their presumptive work in our city?
No, we haven't had a presentation.
And the reason that concerns me is that, the reason that I'm bringing this up is because I, for one, would like to see a presentation or some, them to address the city council, so that we can understand exactly what Abode is going to be doing, and how their activities are going to mesh with and enhance the activities that are currently underway through our police department, our homeless intervention team, et cetera, because presumably, they're going to be working hand in hand. And I'd like to see a presentation where they can come and speak to us, and maybe we can have questions. And I just say this because, you know, once again, homelessness is, you know, one of our top priorities, and this is going to be an important working relationship. And I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to address Abode and to ask any questions that we might have, number one. Number two, it's over a quarter of a million bucks, right? So it's over $20,000 a month, and that's coming out of the general fund. And we've been, you know, under pressure with that general fund, so just being a good gatekeeper of the resources of the city, and I just hope that we can be engaged with a conversation with Abode to see, to understand more about exactly what they're going to be doing, and how they're going to be meshing their activities with our police department and our hit team. So that's why I'm bringing it up. Do I need to, do I need, what do I need to do to do that?
Let's get other comments, and then we can decide. Councilman Vaccaro.
Sure, yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think that Abode did do a presentation for Capsolano, I believe. They didn't?
No, they did not. But we do actually have a representative from Abode here.
I know we discussed Abode, yeah, and what they do. I just wanted, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Oh, thank you.
I have heard, I mean, I've heard what they do, so, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, Councilman Doc.
And I'm aware of them, I spoke with them today. They also took over the housing funding for SLEs for the county. So they came in at county level, and they took over a lot of the county services, such as SLE housing, homeless. So they're the lead in it now. They completely farmed it out to them.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
I wanted to thank Vice Mayor for pulling down this item as a consent. I would like to see a presentation. I also have touched the new organization through, as a housing provider. And I guess my concern is that this is a lot of onboarding of a lot of different pieces. And I want to make sure that, A, Fairfield is a priority, B, I did read the rules and responsibilities, but I would like to dig more. As Vice Mayor said, you know, like literally, when we were chopping up the budget, we were like, we're going to freeze hit team, we're going to, I believe we might have reassigned them. Like, this is a key, key position here for our city. It's key, and I want to know way more than just signing over a check.
So is it, is it the desire that we hold off and voted on this until we get a presentation and can ask more questions? Is that what we're looking for?
That's what I'm looking for.
And Madam Mayor, sorry, you need to take public comment.
Yeah, yes, yeah. I'll take public comment. And is there anybody who wants to speak on this?
I don't have any cards for this item.
Nothing online, okay.
Hello, Board, hello, Mayor.
Hit the mic there, yeah, speak to the mic.
Okay, okay. My name is Deshaun Waters. I am the Associate Director for Abode Services. I would love to give a presentation about the services that we're contracted to provide with the county, and how we would love to support the city of Fairfield in their attempt. So I look forward to that opportunity.
Thank you, Deshaun. I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to see whether we're going to move this to another, you know, another meeting before we approve it. It is a lot of money, and I agree with my two colleagues who have spoken, the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Williams, that I would like to see what you are going to do before we approve it. Now, I know that we have details here, but some questions have arisen with me, too, that I'd like to speak with you about, having to do with relationships with law enforcement, and the things that happened in Vallejo that were very ugly.
I understand, definitely.
You understand that?
I know exactly what you're talking about, and I'd love to speak with you about that.
I would love to speak with you about that, too. So, very good, and it's all good. So did you want to make a motion, then?
I shall. I move that Item 3 be removed from the consent calendar and added to a full city council meeting agenda for full council discussion.
And I'll second that.
And presentation by Abode.
Thank you. Is it okay if I give you my contact information?
I would love to have your contact information.
Thank you.
So we got a motion, a second thank you, Deshaun, on moving this so we can get a presentation. So, go Deshaun. So all in favor of doing that?
Aye.
And oppose? Was that unanimous? Oh, that was unanimous. I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of you. I've got to tune my hearing aid up, anyway. Thank you. So we are going to move that, then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, so now, we're going to go ahead and back to the consent. Are there any other issues that we want to? No? Okay, all entertain a motion, then to approve it.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, so now, we're going to go to, into action items, and we're on Number 9.
Item 9, City Council Direction to Director of Community Development or the Planning Commission for Special Review of Restated and Amendment Development Agreement, Number 2014-1, with Albert D. Cino Construction Company, A California Limited Partnership, Seekon Financial and Construction Company, A California Corporation, and West Coast Home Builders, A California Corporation.
And Madam Mayor, David Lim, City Attorney for the city of Fairfield. This is an action item that was placed on the agenda pursuant to some closed session discussions with the city council and follow-up with Mayor Moy. As you all know, the city sent a letter to Seekon Financial and Construction Company about a week ago, based on council's direction to issue a notice of default, a notice of breach and default for the Red Top Road expansion. Pursuant to that, the mayor asked me to agendize this to determine whether or not the city council would like to further instruct the staff to conduct a special review of the development agreement with Seekon. Under the terms of the development agreement, the staff cannot conduct a special review without authorization from the council. We've determined you don't need a resolution, you nearly need to give direction to staff to conduct that special review, and then the community development director will take the lead pursuant to the development agreement. So that's all we're seeking. You do need to take public comment, but there's no formal vote. You do need to take public comment, but there's no formal vote or resolution that needs to be made. You can just issue by consensus if you want that action to be taken. And if the majority of you do, then that will give enough instruction for the community development director. And I'll take any questions you have about that.
Thank you. I'll take public comment on this.
We have Nora Dezon.
Hi, Nora.
Hello. Hello, Mayor. City Council, City Attorney and City Manager, thank you for putting this on the agenda. You know, we in Cordelia just feel so bad, we feel like we're like getting kicked around all the time because we've had this need, extreme need for this widening project to be completed. And back in November 2022, we said, what's going to happen if they don't do it? And everybody thought, oh, they'll, they'll finish it. But they didn't. The deadline has passed, we're already here five months later. There really needs to be a review. The, I visited the enclave offices today and they, or they said to me that they expect to start building the other side of the project. There are a few units or some units on the other side of Red Top Road. And he said, oh, we're going to start that in two months. And I'm sorry, it just felt really bad to me that we, the residents have been putting up with this for so long. You know, and the other thing I don't understand is why couldn't there have been some sort of modification of terms if we're really just waiting on parts for the water pump? The water pump is on the same side as the enclave. And, and I was told there had to be some sort of excavation, but I'm sorry, that just doesn't ring true. And we also already, already have water source on the other side where you've got the second, or is it the third phase of the enclave? So anyway, first, thank you for respecting us enough to put this on the agenda. And please, respect us again enough to do what is right for our community, don't just poo-poo this away. I really thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nora.
Next, we have Doug Chen.
And Madam Mayor, I do apologize, as Mr. Chen's coming up to speak, we did receive an email and I had a phone conversation with Mr. Chen this morning. He provided an email along with an attachment that I've printed and placed on the dais for each of you. I've also left a copy for the public out on the back table. Mr. Chen, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, council members, for letting me speak. I'm here, I represent the developer and the applicant. I'm here to answer your questions. And just real quickly, we are, there are several projects involved, Red Top Road widening and also at the same time we are building a pump, a new pump station, Red Top Road Pump Station. And that will require, after the pumps, the new pump station is finished, we'll have to demolish the existing pump station. And there are pipelines for the existing pump station within the new road. So our plan now is, there are separate projects. We have directed our, given instructions to our contractor for the road widening project to remobilize next week, finish it within six weeks. But I do want to let the council members know that if the existing pump station is not demolished prior to us completing the, the road, we will have to shut down the road again to dig into the new road in order to remove the, the structures for the existing pump station. So I, I just want to make it clear so everyone knows that we, we can finish a new road within six weeks, but that will require a later shutdown of the new road.
Thank you. I, I, do you mind if I ask you a question?
Of course, I'm here to answer your questions.
Okay. Who are you representing?
I represent the develop, applicant and developer, Albert D. Cino Construction Company, West Coast Home Builders and Seekon Financial.
Okay, is that operated by Albert the second, the father, or Albert the third?
The father.
It's the father?
Yes.
Okay. And, all right, so you're saying now that you're going to get this done, you have a deadline here.
July 19th.
Completion July 19th, 2024. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you do say in this email that for the existing pump station, the demolition, it might need closure of Red Top Road again to do work?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, well, okay. I think that those are the only, the questions that I have. I do have a question for staff, I don't know if, is, is Mr. Feinstein here?
City engineer.
Oh, Ryan is, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chen, I appreciate you coming.
You're welcome, I'm here, I'll be here to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Hi. So, on page 72 in section G of, of the agenda, I, I just need some clarification, I'm confused. I, I'm wondering when was the, the certificate of occupancy, the 90th certificate of occupancy? When did that happen? Yeah, when, when did that happen so it would trigger this, the Red Top Road widening and all? It, it looks like, I took some notes here, it looks like the referenced information that the units fell into three different subdivisions, does that make sense? Is that right? Yeah?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm reading this, I'm reading this section.
Okay, I'm sorry, I know I keep asking, I'm going to zip my, zip, zip.
No, would I, would I, from the time that the December 31st, 2023 deadline had passed, the city has not issued any vertical construction permits.
Right.
I'm not aware, I have to do some research to see if, if this 90th certificate of occupancy for these three subdivisions, so the, the development that's currently surrounding the Red Top Road, that's the enclave.
Right.
That's the enclave, the field, the field crest and hasn't commenced, that hasn't started. So I, I have to double-check with our community development department, in particular, our chief building official to see, to follow up on the 90th certificate of occupancy. But I do know that no additional building permits have been issued beyond.
It must have, it must have happened like a long ti, like a long time ago, I, I would think, to trigger this. I mean, I, I remember starting to get questions back in 2014 about Red Top Road.
So, so when, when you're referring to section G and?
Yes.
Page, I assume is that the development agreement?
It is, it's the DA, yes.
Okay.
It's the attachment, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It is the attachment and so.
So when, when that was amended, you eliminated the 90 unit limit out of the DA. So now that was the trigger date?
Right.
Just to commence the work. So I'm pretty sure they'd hit the 90 permits. And in 2022, I think it was October of 2022, then there was an amendment related to the development agreement that put in place the deadline then that Mr. Pung and Evans talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Which was end of, the, end of 2023 for completion of the road. Otherwise, the city would stop issuing building permits for new units within, I believe it was enclave. So?
Right.
Since December, we've not issued any permits?
For enclave.
For enclave.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I remember the amendment when we finally put in the drop dead date or what should have been for this to be done, Red Top Road. So I'm just trying to figure it out all in my mind because it's been an ongoing thing, obviously, and it's a real issue, especially with school. We want this done, and I'm, I'm glad you're saying July here because we, we need that open up before the school starts again. So, okay, well, yeah, Councilman Tonison.
So, what is your timeline? And, and explain to me the, the cutting of the roads.
Our timeline, there, again, there are two separate projects, the pump station project, which is a, a critical project for the, for the city, for the area, because it's, the new pump station replaces an existing pump station. And the city's water department can probably explain more of why it's important to get the new pump station completed as soon as possible, which we are doing. The contractors out there are working non-stop. Unfortunately, due to theft issues, there were critical components that were stolen that took months to replace. And we're, and has been replaced, but it's waiting for certification, you know, inspection sign off from the city and, and then waiting for PGE to energize the new, new pump station. After the new pump station is done, there will be a startup process that's going to be led by the city to make sure the pumps, the new pump station is running properly. Now, I believe that startup is going to be about two weeks. At that time, then the, the city staff will have enough confidence to demol, to let us demolish the existing pump station. And the existing pump station has pipelines in the road, in the existing half of the road and also in the new road. So, and that's one of the issues that we've been holding off because we know that when we demolish the existing structures in the road, we're going to have to saw cut brand new pavement and shut down the road again. So, but we're at a point where we can't wait any longer. Like, like the residents in the, in the nearby area, they're tired of the road being shut down. And we have our enclave, Unit 3, building permits and we want to pull permits. So we cannot wait any longer. So now that's why we're saying we have to go ahead and just finish road. And the existing pump station may not be demolished by that time, it may be, we don't know, but regardless, we're going to finish the pump station. We're going to finish the road even if, even if it goes first. Again, because we have our enclave subdivision that we want to start building, enclave Unit 3. There are actually three subdivisions with an enclave, Unit 1, Unit 2, and Unit 3. The trigger to start the road construction happened in Unit 2. And that's why we are, we started construction. I believe the subdivision improvement agreement for the, the road widening was executed in June of 2023.
We, we feel the frustration of the residents. You know, we, we had an agreement to have it done by a certain date.
Yes.
That, that date has passed.
Yes.
When are you going to get it done? What is the date that you're going to get it done?
We have directed our, our contractor for the road widening to remobilize next week and finish it within six weeks. So July, July 19th is the completion date.
Okay. I got a question for you. On July 19th, the completion date, how long is it going to be open before you shut it down again to cut it out?
That depends on the timing of the demolition of the existing pump station. So that's, that's a separate timeline. We have a separate timeline for the new pump station to be completed. After that's completed, it needs to be tested for several weeks before we can bring the new pump station online to replace the existing pump station.
And second question, the enclave, when you start the new phases, 1, 2, and 3, is, are those also dependent on the new pump station for the water for those units?
Well, this is the, the Red Top Zone 2 pump station, so not just our units, all the units, residential units within Zone 2 is relying on the new pump station, will be relying on the new pump station.
So you really can't get it started until the new pump station's finished, is that correct?
You mean the demolition of existing pump station?
No, the, the starting on the new phases of, of the housing.
Oh, we, we can, but we, for the, for enclave Unit 3, we, from a marketing standpoint, we want the road to be finished. Right, we don't want, you know, have the, have units be opened up and have people drive through a road that's half in construction.
That's what I'm getting at, sir, we don't want that either.
Right. And that's why we have instructed our road contractor to remobilize next week, regardless of what happens with the pump station.
So I drive that road at least every day and probably more. I live in Cordelia. And so the residents that we're talking about that are frustrated, I, I get it. I'm one. I have a husband at home that gives me his two cents and I see it on Nextdoor and Facebook and, and all of that. So I'm glad that you're, you're feeling the weight of the community. I'm so glad to hear my city council members that are speaking up for the residents of Cordelia. And so I have two questions for you. One is, and by the way, and thank you for just coming down, you wrote this, you know, email, sent it to us, but then you came down to ask some, answer some questions. And I really appreciate that. So my first question is, what type of security do we have in your words that this is going to be done in July? Like I've heard so many dates and this has gone on and on and on forever. What are those things that I'm, that we're, because I'm not a construction person, that I'm, that I'm missing that, that could cause you to be like, we didn't get this done, we didn't make this deadline and this is why? Like what is, what is that?
I mean, the biggest issue, the road construction part is actually pretty easy. The, the biggest issue for us is, has been the new pump station. You know, the, we suffered a major setback due to theft of some components in the pump station building. It's a secure building with CME building, C, CME wall and sealed doors. And somehow, you know, someone wants to break in, I guess they can break in. And so we have taken additional measures to finish the, the block wall around this, the pump station, just make it a little harder for people to get in. And I think the city staff has been helping out in providing, you know, running wires from the existing pump station to the new pump station, keeping in mind the new pump station does not power right now. That's one of the hardest things to, you know, get alarms set, there's additional power. But the city staff has been great in helping us out and running power to the, let us run power from the existing pump station to the new pump station so that we can set alarms on the doors so that if someone breaks in, at least, you know, alarm will go off.
Doug, was this the second time that there was theft to the pump station?
I believe this was the second time. The, 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 this is the, the first time where, the, the most recent event was the event where they actually, with the theft of the electrical components that takes several months to replace, it's a long lead time item.
So you all are responsible for securing? And so it failed before, so then theft, and now theft the second time? And so now you're making the enclosure harder to get into so it won't be theft for a third time?
Right.
Which all causes delays?
Right.
Okay. I know you can feel my frustration and the frustration of community like this is.
You, you have to understand from our viewpoint that once we start construction, we want to finish it. The, the constant delays, it, it costs money. So that's no, we, we don't want to stop construction. That's why, once we remobilize, we just want to finish it.
Right. And this might be more of a staff question, but, you know, how do we, I mean, can we get this in writing? I mean, we got the email that said we want it done by, I mean, can we have some documentation signed? What, what, what has a little bit more teeth than moving timelines?
So I'll take first shot at that. Under the terms of the existing contracts, you have an existing contract that is already in breach, in our opinion, in legal counsel's opinion. They were supposed to have done this expansion and have it completed by December 31st, 2023. They didn't. The remedy which you all instructed us to prepare, which we have sent to CNO, was that they have 15 days to comply with completing the project. And if they have not completed the project, then we can either take the project over ourselves and complete it or ask the surety, their insurance carrier, to finish it. I believe staff has heard from the surety with a contact number. So you already have something in writing that says if they're not in compliance within 15, 15 days of having received our letter, which was last Friday. So basically, two weeks from last Friday, the city could take enforcement action and complete the project themselves or have the, instruct or demand that the surety do it and then bill CNO construction for that. it, and then bill SINO construction for that. Any other enforcement remedies, I would recommend that we go into closed session to discuss legal options for the city, so that we're not broadcasting it here in public. But we already have a written contract. Of course, the council could decide that they want to enter into an amendment to the agreement, but again, I would want to advise that to you in closed session. So, I'm not expressing an opinion in favor or opposition to that, but I think we would want to discuss that as an option in closed session.
You go ahead.
My last question is, um, and thank you for that, David Lim. Um, so, if we, this is a very short timeline left, we're in June, we're talking about this being completed in July. Is there, is there a way that, um, I know staff is tracking a timeline, okay, within two weeks, this is, you know, in the construction world, this, what should, this should be done, and four weeks, this should be done, and, and six weeks, this should be done. When, how, can we get the, the, the red, red flag if this looks like it's not going to hit the deadline, before the deadline?
Yes, I, we could work, we have biweekly meetings with a developer and their, their subcontractors. So, as they're progressing, he, Mr. Chen had mentioned the, the civil subcontractor is going to be arriving on the site next week. If, if, we'll be tracking, our construction team and our public works inspector will be tracking that. Um, they're out there every day, and, and we'll be ensuring that the performance is being handled.
Councilwoman Ficaro?
Yeah, um, okay, first of all, I'm okay with the recommended action also. I think we should do the review.
Yes.
Absolutely. And, you know, I've always had issues up there at Red Top from back in 2010. I think because of the school, I still don't like the location of the school up there. I never liked it in the beginning. But I think the problem is, it's always been a traffic issue, you know, always, because of this type of situation. So, I think, I mean, to me, there's no other way, but you have to get it done before school starts, because it's still going to be a nightmare out there. But I really do think we need to provide direction, that's our recommended action, you know, to review it, a special review. It has to. I mean, we've been on, waiting for this too long, so. And I agree with my colleagues, you know, we hear about it all the time from the people that live up here and people that represent the area, and so, um, I think we're all kind of over it. We just want to see it done, so.
Um, anybody else still? Okay. Do you mind, I'm going to make a comment, but I, I, I got your motion there, and I'll also second that. Mr. Chen, is there any way? Because I, I think my staff has told me, our staff has told me, that you should be able to do both within that time period, which means the, you know, both, both construction pieces, the widening and the water. Can you?
Uh, we can definitely do the road, but the new pump station is, right now, we're waiting on city inspection to clear PGE to energize the pump station. And, and, and then we need to, PG, PG has to, they set their date on when they want to energize. Uh, after it's energized, we're going to do testing, the, the pump testing, the generator testing, and then the duration of the startup, that's depending on the city, whether they want to do it, you know, if you want to do a two-week startup, three-week startup, to prove the reliability of the new pump station.
So, if, if the city does everything that it needs to do in lickety-split, moving it like nobody's ever seen before, can you get it done then by the same time as the road widening?
Yes, we have, in fact, we have assumed that the pump station will be started up on, by June 12th. That's, that's our assumption.
It was your assumption.
That's our assumption, that, that, uh, we, we will be able to get PGE to energize the pump station. That requires, you know, PG, PG has already done the inspection. Right now, they're waiting for city to clear the inspection on, on their side. PG cannot, PG cannot energize without clearance from the city.
Okay. Well, you know, Mr. City Manager, can we have the city move, can you guys move that fast?
So, what Mr. Chen is referring to, there's a, there's a piece of electrical, it's called a bus bar.
Okay.
That needs to be, uh, that's the, that's the component that he was referring to that was stolen. We, the subcontractor that's on the pump station has reinstalled that, and what we, what the subcontractor is working on providing to the city of Fairfield, it's the adequate documentation that that meets the state's regulations for that, for that electrical piece. Once the subcontractor has furnished that to the city, we will be able to provide within, as, as soon as that information is provided to us, we'll be able to sign off on it. It has not been provided to us to date, but we've been working closely with their subcontractor to get that.
Is there any other way to get that information? Google it? I don't know.
Well, no. It, it takes a specialty certification in order to get that, but let, let me help hopefully clarify things.
Okay.
So, as Mr. Chen points out, he believes that it'll be energized by the 12th. We're waiting on, is it UL or CL certification? Once we get that, then it takes us a day for the inspection to confirm and review the paperwork, and everything's good. So, if assuming it's energized by the 12th, um, our, our schedule is about a 20-day commissioning process for the new pump. Um, it's, it's two weeks of testing, confirming that it's going to meet all of our requirements, uh, and then about a week to abandon the old pump. Given that timeline, um, let's, let's assume the end of June, then, um, within the construction schedule that I've been given based on conversations with, um, our staff, with Gelati, and with Mr. Chen, uh, it's about four weeks of pavement work. So, I think ultimately, what the best interest of everybody is, the, the pump station needs to be completed, needs to be energized, and it needs to get to the commissioning phase. Soon as that commissioning phase is done, then all of the pavement work can, can commence without need to then come back and basically rip up a section of brand-new pavement in order to remove valves out of what is otherwise then going to be a brand-new street. That's preferable from a long-term maintenance perspective, because you don't want to build a brand-new roadway, then come in and cut, um, you know, channels into it in order to excavate down, remove equipment, uh, and then pave right back over that, and now you have lines on that road that are, you know, opportunities for water intrusion. So, um, I think the, the question for the council is, is your interest in just seeing it done as quickly as possible, recognizing that if, if SINO gives Gelati the, the red light, or I'm sorry, the green light, to move now, um, that you're going to have a roadway that they then come back and excavate in order to remove this valve equipment, um, and you're getting it by middle of July? Or is beginning of August acceptable, so that it's still before the start of, of school at Rodriguez, but you're getting a brand-new road that's then not going to have trench work done in it? Because that's where our staff, when we're putting together the schedule, we think that's possible by the start of school, and that's where I think I would look to Mr. Chen for just confirmation that, um, they can move on that scheduling in partnership with the city in order to make that happen, so that by the time, uh, school starts at Rodriguez, the road's done, and the pump station's done, and all that.
Councilwoman Williams?
Um, for me, uh, just thinking about my community, its needs, to me, it makes more sense that August be the date, and it be done correctly. We do not want this road, we're happy-go-lucky down this road, and now it's being torn into again. We're in the same situation that we're in now. The critical, critical deadline is the, when, when Rodriguez starts, that is a working, used, were, road that is not being, uh, ripped up. We're not waiting for everything, we're, we're ready to go. So, I feel better. As much as I would love for the, the date to be in two weeks, I'd rather the date be in August, and there not be a second ripping up of the pavement. Um, that's, that's my two cents.
Councilman Tornison?
Uh, I, I would agree with that. What if it's not done?
It's going to be hell to pay.
I mean, what's plan B? Because there, the timeline is crept and crept and crept and crept, and so what, what happens?
Well, I think that we have to go back into closed session and talk about what legal ribbon is.
Okay.
That's, that's what we, we'll need to do.
That's a good call. Thanks.
Yeah. Councilwoman Ficaro, did you have some?
Councilwoman Doug? All right. Yeah, no.
It, it really doesn't make any sense to get that road laid out real quick and then tear into it again. And like David pointed out, that, that causes a lot of other problems. With a little bit of construction background that I have, the, the seams in the road aren't, aren't, they can, later on, it'll be a lot more problems than a sealed road. So, I'm, I'm all for the August date.
Um, so, Mr. Chen, it sounds like, um, we would like to get it all done, and all done by the beginning of August.
And if you could get it done sooner, that'd be fine.
Yeah, and if you could get it done sooner, that's fine. But is that doable then, you think?
It is, it is very doable. Again, we have already, we're making preparations to remobilize, and we're going to remobilize next week on Red Top Road regardless. And that, and that's going to go. And it, and, you know, the completion date, instead of July 19th, yes, maybe we will hold off for two weeks for waiting on completion of the pump station, the demolition of the existing pump station.
Okay. Um, I, if, if I might, Mr. Chen, I wanted to tell you thank you for coming. I know you've worked for the SINO family for a long time, and, um, and I appreciate you being the one coming here. I wanted to ask you a quick question, and that is, because I don't understand the theft that are going on, I know this is just a, a thing, but it concerns me when people are So, does SINO have video or any kind of surveillance of their properties? Security, video, anything like that?
Uh, no, we do not, because the site doesn't, does not power right now. That's one of the problems, we don't have power. Now, when the city does take over, I believe the city, uh, does have video cameras planned to be installed for the pump station.
Yeah. But, uh, does, okay, so, on that, that, um, project, we don't, because of no electricity.
There's no power right now.
All right.
What are they stealing?
Um, there's, the theft is for two, a breaker and a bus bar. They're very specialized components. It's, it's, it's someone who knows what they're looking for. And unfortunately, those are not just off-the-shelf items you can get at Home Depot, you know, that, they take, they take weeks or months to, to, to order and replace.
And, and, and there has been police reports, and it has been reported to the police?
Yes, we, we, actually, we met with, right after it happened, we have weekly meetings for the pump station, progress meetings. So, the cities were aware of what's, you know, what's going on.
Yeah, it is interesting that it is, it sounds like it's a very specialized thing, that you have to know what you're stealing. So, it's got to be somebody else in construction.
Yeah, that we believe, no, it's, it's someone who's very knowledgeable with, uh, electrical components, not only, not the household electrical components, but industrial electrical.
Sure. Appreciate you answering all of our questions and for sending us an email. We look forward to the project getting done, so you can move on.
Yeah.
With the...
Glad to.
We can start issuing permits again.
Right.
Um, and thank you again. All right. So, back to the council, we have, we have a motion on the floor. Could you re, repeat that?
Yeah, the motion is, actually, number nine, the recommended action, to be...
Provide direction to director, thanks Scott, direction to community development of the planning commission for special review of the restated and amended development agreement.
And, um, do you, you want the planning commission to do that, or to come back before us?
Um...
Or both?
Probably both. What do you think, Mr. City Manager? You think we, or should we just do the community, I mean?
We, we can come back to you, and then if you want to move it down to planning commission, we can do that.
I think we should do that. Does that make sense?
I'm good for it.
Okay, then I'm second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you very much, colleagues. And now, we're going to go ahead and put my glasses on and move on to item 10.
Item 10, Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan Update and Council Input. Our presenter is Christina Konzinger, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Hi, Christine.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is part two of our continuation of the presentation that was made in, at your May 7th council meeting. So, I'm going to breeze through some of this, and you can slow me down with the, um, mind, being mindful of timing. So, tonight, I'll give a very brief, high-level summary of your homework assignments.
No, I'm going to take a break. Everybody needs to use the restroom, so we're going to take like a 10-minute break. Thank you. I see everybody getting up. Sorry. Five minutes, five minutes. It's going to be fast. Okay. Thank you.
Like the actual land purchases, the actual construction of the improvements. And then, of course, operation and maintenance would be any kind of landscape maintenance, any kind of staff that are required to maintain. And then operations, depending on the amenities, if there's programming, all of those things, electricity, that's all part of that operation bucket. And then the life cycle replacement is really identifying whatever amenity is brought into a park. There's an industry standard that gives a range of how many years does that amenity or that building last? And then programming that into as a replacement at whatever time it is required to do so. So when you look at all three of those things, that's where we're talking about total costs of ownership. And that is what we're trying to do to establish a sustainable strategy to maintain and operate our existing parks and then for decision making and informing prioritization for anything new that would be coming up. So the next slide is really cost, capital cost illustrations. And this is just to give high level, again, examples of when and how much money are we looking at when we're building new parks? So the first line is really based on the estimates that we had a separate master plan done for Matt Garcia. And so the total value based on that design and the elements was estimated to be about $122 million. So that's if we were to, as a typical community park being brand new, that's kind of what we're looking at. So now we're saying to ourselves, all right, if we're going to build a whole new community park sometime in the future, in today's dollars, we know we need about 2.5 million per acre if we're doing something similar. And then if we have an existing community park like Allen Witt, that we're just renovating or maybe repurposing some of those things based on our actual project identified estimates for the phases that we had pre-planned, is about 31 million or 750, I'm rounding up, per acre. So these are things that we just use as guides for anything that we're moving forward. Of course, when we would have an actual project, we would still have to design it and put it out to bid. But these are really just trying to establish some kind of illustration of what is a typical park cost. And so similar with the neighborhood parks and the linear park illustrations, that's what this slide is really speaking to. And then similarly, we added a couple of slides, and I'm not going to read through all of them. But again, this is really looking at if we're, whether we're looking at an existing park and some of the things that we did hear from the community, and I'll just give a general example is, okay, we, people wanted more water features, a pool or whatever. So in some of our existing parks, we probably can't build a pool, but maybe the decision would be down the road, if one of the playground structures is at its end of life, that could be an opportunity that you remove that and then replace it with a splash pad rather than a playground. So what we're doing here is just offering some idea of typical, again, these are industry standards, like, I'll read the first line. So typically for artificial turf, and this is just an example of a multi-use, that lifespan is usually only seven to 10 years. The cost of it is 1.1 million to 1.6. And that's just the amenity itself. So if you have an existing area that's turf, and now you're renovating it and adding that, it's going to be somewhere within that range to have it installed. And then every seven to 10 years, we have to be prepared that it's either going to denigrate to be replaced or removed and go back to turf. So I'm not going to read through this whole list. These are just, again, some of the illustrations that will be included in the final park master plan as just guides, again, like if, for decision making, as we build parks, we want to have like a little menu of things. We have neighborhood parks, we're going to be offering some standards of, these are the typical elements that would go in there. And then that's how you can pre-cost it out before going out to a formal design and bid. So you kind of have a range of understanding what those typical costs are. Any questions on just the general information as it's presented? And again, this is replacing existing, the numbers that you see here. So no new construction. So the example I'll give with that is if we had a new restroom, you'll see on there that we have a range of 385 to 550,000. That's for the building itself. So that's assuming that we have a restroom that's at its life cycle end, that's going to be replaced. We already have sewer, we already have water, so that's just the, the structure. If we needed to have a new restroom, then there would be some design and construction that needed to happen that would increase the cost of that. Okay, makes sense?
Yep.
Okay. Then the next, excuse me. So then, the next thing that we had been working on with our consultants and our staff primarily is looking at our maintenance staffing levels. And so when we, I'm going to walk through the diagram or pictures here. So the, the top grouping is looking at facility maintenance. And the facility maintenance really is only park and rec buildings. So the adult rec center, community center, aquatic center, gym, and our three neighborhood centers. So looking at all of those buildings, we have 136,800 square feet when you combine them all. And so currently, we have the staff full-time equivalent of 1.7 individuals. We don't third-party contract for our facilities. And the best practice or the standard industry is to have one full-time for every 28,000. So that next column says, here's how many people you should have based on your 136,000 square feet. We should have almost five full-time staff to properly maintain them at a, you know, the level, best practice level. So what this is indicating is in that example, that we're really short just over three people to, to meet that industry standard. And then similar to the next line is the, I'm sorry, that was custodial maintenance. Then the next is building maintenance. And for the city of Fairfield, the primary building maintenance for the park and rec day-to-day is on our staff. And then the bigger projects like major plumbing, major electrical for those facilities, Public Works Facilities Team manages those. And so the, the depiction here on the building maintenance is taking those five buildings and looking at both public work staff and our parks and rec staff to say, here's what we have as a equivalent FTE of 2.4. And again, the industry standard says you should have one per 40,000, so we would need 3.4, so we're short about 1.1 employees right now. And then the next series is really looking at the park maintenance, and primarily this is landscape maintenance. And Public Works does manage the majority of the general landscape of our parks system. And then our department, we do specialized or specific amenities where we do additional maintenance for those type of things. So in this illustration, we look at the developed parks and acres. So of those, there's 281 acres, and we currently have a staff of 4.8. And through Public Works, we have landscape contracts, which I believe you're all aware that most of the mowing is done by third-party. But their equivalent of time and energy is equivalent to six full-time people. So combined with our contractors and our city staff, we have 10.8. The industry standard is to have one per 15 acres, which would need a total of just over 18. So here's where we're short, about eight full-time people to meet the industry standard. And I do want to give a shout out to the maintenance team because here in Fairfield, given the limited resources, I think they, they all and we all do a pretty darn good Any questions on that line?
Nope.
Okay. So then, the next slide is landscape maintenance costs as it relates to funding. So for this illustration, we're looking at community and neighborhood parks. We have about 280 acres. And the maintenance standard is, you know, considered like a level two, which is a little bit, I think, less than what would be our best practice of industry standard. And that's indicated by when we look at the total dollars that are dedicated. So the city contributes about one, just over a million dollars for city staff costs. And then through the third-party, about 900,000. So combined, or using the map there, we are spending currently about $7,000 per developed acre or mile because the next one is on trails. And the best practice says for that first one that we should be spending more like 12,000. So there's a $5,000 gap per acre, which translates to that 1.4 million. So if we wanted to get to the industry standard, it would require an additional investment of 1.4. And then we are doing pretty well on the greenways paths and trails, but I do want to mention that this does not include like our open space trails. It's just general what our third-party maintains for us as a city. Okay. So then, our consultants-led staff through, sorry, I think there was one other point I wanted to make. Okay, let me go back to one slide. Sorry, getting ahead of myself. Okay, so then, one of the things that this, all of this information of staffing, the maintenance costs and investment is really to inform. It's to inform us. So if we know we need or want to elevate some of that maintenance or having, you know, more regular, right now, maybe we only mow once a week and we're wanting to get to that next level or get to that industry standard, we need to then look at future, if and when we have additional resources or maybe modifying how we're doing our service, that's where we come back to that total cost of service. So that now we are fully understanding that if we are going to build something new, that we have a policy or practice right now, actually, that we don't build a park until we are assured that we have funding available for the ongoing maintenance. Because we don't want to build something, which grants are great for capital, but there's not a whole lot of grant for actual maintenance and most, I mean, well, certainly not maintenance and then very few for actual programming to the degree of covering full staff costs. Okay. Then, the next, and we're almost done here. The next two slides, our consultants-led staff through an exercise of identifying potential funding strategies. So it is typical of parks and recreation program to rely on general fund, but then there's other opportunities that we can be looking at or deciding if and where we want to maybe generate some more energy and trying to bring in more or different types of money to help support these areas. So there's external funding, capital fees and user fees are on this first slide. And just recently, the council did adopt a resolution for increasing the facility use fees and the aquatic submission fees. So that is one strategy of maintaining costs or funding to offset the costs. And then the feasibility for increasing, I'm just going to highlight a couple of these on the screen. The feasibility for increasing corporate sponsorships, crowdfunding, foundation gifts or friends, friends being like our adopted park programs or whatever, do require staff time and commitment to solicit, to sell, manage those campaign efforts. And so if and when we have additional staff allocation or time, we can increase our times and our effort on those. So we felt those were kind of at a medium range that we do get some sponsors for some of our events, but to the degree of really doing some kind of outreach to more of our businesses and corporate, we, we lack the staff to really do that. And then on the capital fees, there's a dedication or development fee. So the city is prepared to review our development fees next. And that then is why we have that as a high, because we know that's a high potential of bringing in additional funds for parks and or recreation. And then similarly, on the, as I mentioned, we really rely on general fund or the discretionary revenue, if you will. So on the property taxes, we list these and the lighting and landscape is high, but only due to knowing that we have a growth of new housing coming. So that would translate into new properties being added to the tax roll. And then typically with new neighborhoods, there's some kind of agreement or negotiated agreement to have a lighting and landscape as part of the development agreement. So that's why we have those high, not that we're doing anything new with existing, but we're saying the feasibility of bringing in more money is due to that growth that we're expecting. And then similarly, the ones that are medium, we already, these are what we call the discretionary revenues that come in and support a lot of public safety in parks are your typical sales tax, all the different tax support that comes in already to the city. And then the franchisees and licensing side of things, we really don't have the amenities or venues here in Fairfield that really translate to, you know, having these big catering permits or pouring rights. So those are why we have those low. And then private management, we do have as high and similar to what we did last year with looking at our contracts for the Gulf. We're looking at the downtown theater and then our landscape providers. This is when we do new or renew or have new contracts, that's where we can either amend some of the performance measures or look at different revenue sharing. So that's why we have these as high. And then the others, as you see, private developers are usually low because we're dealing with other, and other ways of getting those, those funds. So then, the next steps on all of this is that, you know, first, let me just say, this is the first parks recreation master plan that the city of Fairfield has had. So I'm proud that we're able to, you know, prepare this document. It really is a tool and a resource to help guide decision-making. And when you see the, the draft, there's a lot of great information that we've culminated over months, actually a year of community engagement, staff, stakeholders, your input. And so it really starts helping determine like where, where should we be investing next? How should we be repurposing or where we can, knowing that we have limited resources? If we're feeling like we need more of XYZ, maybe the existing parks as those things deteriorate or we need to replace them, that's where we're plugging in those XYZs and not waiting for the next big park. So a lot of this is what comes through your park master plan, and there'll be some policies that we'll be looking at and adopting those at, hopefully by the second meeting in July is our plan for adopting the, the formal master plan. And we are working with our consultants to have the public review available by the end of this month. So, and those timetables, while we're trying to stay to them, if there was more information that the council wanted to have with the, in conjunction with or after reviewing that public, we can always look to bring that later to you for a formal adoption. If there's more work or more comments or anything that you would want to see in addition to what we're preparing at this point. So that concludes my presentation and would be open to any questions.
Thank you. Excuse me, do we have any public comments on this?
I do not have any public comments and no hands raised online.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments about this?
Good work Christina.
Thank you.
Great work. Good presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm with Doug. That's a thorough presentation. You know, it's gonna, I don't think millions and millions and millions of dollars are dropping into our laps anytime soon, but it's nice to have the, you know, a master plan. So thank you.
Yeah, and I want to also take a moment to publicly thank our small but mighty team, our project team, Marisa Campion, who's in the back, Caroline Vedder, who I believe is listening. It's been a real fun time working with these folks and thank our community absolutely for all the time and energy, the council, our stakeholders. It's, it's been a really great opportunity to put something together that will be very beneficial, I think, for you as decision-makers and us with prioritizing the capital investment.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. So now we're going to item 11, please.
Item 11, staff update on the power purchase agreement with Onyx Development Group LLC for the provision and operation of a solar field at the Waterman Water Treatment Plant. Our presenter is Michael Heather, Assistant Director of Public Works Utilities.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Michael Heather, Assistant Public Works Director for the city's utilities division. The item before you tonight requests that you consider closing the public hearing. But before doing so, I'll supplement the staff report by summarizing our activities since the last council meeting on May 7th, as well as present our recommendations and next steps. So tonight's presentation seeks to provide answers to three questions. First, I'll outline what we've done since the last meeting on May 7th. Second, I'll briefly describe net energy metering and some of the program differences between the net energy metering or NEM 2.0 tariff and the NEM 3.0 tariff. And finally, I'll summarize our next steps. I've timed it, this is only going to take a few minutes.
That's good because I'm going to ask all staff to move it along, okay? Thank you.
You bet. At the last meeting, sorry, at the last meeting, we informed you that we had hired a biologist to assess an area consisting of about 20 acres. So since then, we've called her back out to assess approximately eight more acres in order to determine the feasibility of shifting the arrays down the hill toward the water treatment plant without impeding on our ability to conduct a future treatment plant expansion, whenever that happens. So we've continued a public outreach by letting area residents know our intentions tonight. We sent out a letter a week and a half ago. We've maintained our progress meetings between technical groups and the solar provider because even though we don't have an approved contract, they have been working in good faith with the city. And we've also estimated the difference in energy savings between NEM 2 and NEM 3. So this slide is meant to show the graphical representation of the original 20 acres assessed by the biologists. The perimeter is shown by the alternate black and white line. As a reminder, the solid red line represents creek protection boundary. The blue line represents drainage dotted red lines and vegetated buffers. So the area is represented by green, the green diagonal lines are aquatic resources. So this slide is meant to show a graphical representation of the expanded area that includes the original 20 plus the additional eight acres, more or less expanded to the south. The new perimeter assessed is shown by the solid white dashed dotted line. And that this expanded area, along with the newly identified biological resource zones, have already been shared with the solar provider in pursuit of a new layout. I'll remind everyone that to remain exempt from CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, we must not build anything within these identified vegetated or aquatic resource So I'm going to spend one minute on net energy metering before we go into the differences, and it's only going to take about a minute, minute and a half. So generally speaking, net energy metering or NEM describes a billing structure between electric utility provider and their customers who generate power. When electric customer does not have any solar panels or wind fixtures in place that is generating power, the power comes off the grid, across distribution and service lines, through the customer meter, and in this case, the customer meter registers electricity moving only in one direction. When an electric customer has solar or wind to generate power, there are times when there is a net or remainder between what is used and what is generated. So in the former, where a customer has no solar or other means of generating electricity, that customer is always importing electricity from the grid. In the latter, where a customer has a solar or other means of generating electricity, there are periods when electricity is exported back out to the grid. So under net metering, customers who are generating electricity and not consuming it results in the customer meter registering electricity moving in the opposite direction, from the customer, through the meter, service distribution lines, and back out to the grid. So the meter's spinning backwards, basically. So the most notable difference between NEM 2 and NEM 3 tariff is the value of the energy exported from the customer to the grid. Under NEM 3, the value is considerably lower and thus the energy savings is substantially reduced. So in our case, we submitted an interconnect application with PG&E under the NEM 2 tariff with the project energy savings that we projected approximately 10 and a half million. Under NEM 3, the projected energy saving is reduced by more than half to approximately 5 million. And this will mean that significantly less savings will be passed along to our water rate pairs. So a solar configuration under NEM 3 will most likely include a reduced solar array footprint, more batteries to store electricity as there are no incentives to export energy. So in summary, city staff recommended hearing any, we recommend hearing any public comments and closing the hearing. We will continue to work with multiple technical groups, including the solar provider. They still have expressed an interest. They still think it's a viable project even under the NEM 3. We will finalize the biologist's report after she reviews and validates the new solar array footprint, which must be supplied by the solar provider. Once finalized, we'll file the notice of exemption to fulfill all legal obligations by CEQA. We will continue working with the neighbors who want to proactively work with us to develop a tree planting plan that best screens the array from multiple perspectives. And then city staff will return later with a new solar array layout, most likely the fall, or even later, depending on timing, and working with the neighbors on a tree planting plan. And that is all. I'll pause here for questions.
You were cooking with gas there, thank you. Are there any public comments on this?
I have two public comments, Tim Dowling to be followed by John Takahuchi.
Hello to everyone. I'm Tim Dowling. Over the course of this discussion we've had about the solar panels, we've worked with the city on trying to get a different placement. But I think the overriding feeling that I'm really concerned about is the fire hazard of this installation and the potential for it to burn over the hill, which is not shown in any of the typical slides that talk about the site. Directly on the other side of the hill is a major housing portion of Rancho Solano. There are 43 houses that with a value of $34 million that are roughly 1,000 feet from the original site that we were going to put, they were proposing for the solar panels. We've all heard the discussion on global warming, and I think this recent incident at Tracy is a real example of how quickly things can move. And I just, they, typically, when you're designing something, you have a fail-safe concept in it that if, worst-case scenario, you're not going to have a major problem. And as an example of my concern, at one time, the city council, to my understanding, and the city had approved a manufacturing site out on Peabody that was building large plastic bins that are loaded on flatbed trucks to, to carry tomatoes. And they had an accident out there, and it turned into a six-alarm fire and burned the whole site to the ground. And no one had anticipated it, and the fire department, I'm sure, had signed off on the appropriateness of the way the layout was originally put in. So it's just an example of how quickly this whole thing can move. And these homes that are 1,000 feet from this site, that's three football fields, and using a statistic that I found online, it would take about two minutes if that lit off to go over that hill. And the people would have no awareness that this was coming. It would just come suddenly on them. So I just think that's a real liability that the city doesn't want. And I think, again, this, with all the fires we've had at Santa Rosa, Napa, Maui, and most recently Tracy, I think it's just an indication that things are really changing climate-wise, and I think we really need to evaluate every installation. And this was originally a water treatment plant, and the exposure of the electrical in a water treatment plant is vastly different than having five acres of panels with multiple connections all over them. And just the potential that anything could spark off and go over that hill. So I really would urge everyone to really think about that and think if we can't come up with a better location for this. And the site out on Peabody...
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My message tonight is you got to start thinking outside the box. Okay, you're going to go back to the drawing board and try to find, you know, a different location, a different configuration, whatever, you're still inside the box. Okay? You got to start looking for options. You got an untenable situation here, and you're going to try to make everything fit. Some of the shortcomings of solar panels, just like windmills, they have a short life. And she was talking about life cycle, about 20 years, you got to eat, and you replace them. Okay? They're, they're not recyclable. You got to landfill them, okay? When I say think outside the box, you got to start looking for solutions other than what you're doing right now. I would suggest you start thinking nuclear, okay? Nuclear power, in Europe especially, has been around 50 years, okay? I used to fly. And all along... I used to fly, and all along the North Sea there, France, Belgium, about every 30, 40, 50 miles, you see this little golf ball on the ground. That's a little nuclear power plant servicing its immediate area. They call them pocket plants, okay, they're little guys, and they work fine. The, and I think that you should do that. In many people's minds, nuclear power is still a little scary. You know, they have, what if a meltdown happens, right? And you've got radiation over a wide area, depending on what the wind is, okay? That's highly unlikely with today's technology, okay? The catastrophes in the past, we had Three Mile Island here, and the plant in Ukraine, and Japan, they had Fukushima, okay? Three Mile Island and Ukraine were human error, okay? The technicians didn't do what they were supposed to do. Fukushima was an act of nature, okay? It doesn't happen in a well-run plant anymore. So, anyway, the, there are many companies involved in the industry now. Westinghouse, Babcock and Wilcox, they're the big guys, but they build large-scale plants, okay? There are dozens of smaller companies that will build one to size to your need, okay? And they call them small modular reactors, they can size them however you want. This water plant is a great site, because you have the coolant right there, okay? You use it to cool, you can either distill it into drinking water, or you can pump it back into the canal, whatever you want to do, okay? So I really urge you to start thinking outside the box. This, no matter what you do with citing these solar panels, you're going to run into the same complaints from the people, okay? It's just going to, it's just the way it is. And like I said, they have a life cycle that, it's going to cost you the, what, 14, 15, 20 million dollars, over and over again, every 20 years. It's not going to affect any of us.
Your time's up, John.
We're going to be long gone, but it's our kids that are going to pay for it.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
No other public speakers, no hands raised online, thank you.
Nothing online. Okay, so I'm going to bring this back to city council. What are your desires, a nuclear plant?
Maybe first meeting in August, we'll bring that.
I'm sorry?
First meeting in August, but we were thinking we would bring something back maybe a little bit later, because when we look at, they've got to come to a configuration that has to go back over to the biologist, she's got to validate that configuration, and then we've got to, they've got to work with their vendors. And then, at some point, you all heard about the timelines with vendors, they haven't pulled any triggers yet, those things have long lead times. So what I'm thinking is that we're probably going to be under a NEM 3 tariff. So the, the NEM 3 tariff puts us, it takes us from projected savings of about 10 and a half million to about 5 million. And it's solely because the X, the value of the energy exported has basically nothing.
So, so 5 million's going to cut the savings in half?
Yes.
Doing simple math?
Yes, sir.
So the savings is, so we have 31,000 meters, and if we cut that in half, it's 250, 220,000 a year. Do solar fields start fires?
We, one of the, we've been talking with the, the provider, we were talking about the maintenance, and one of the, what we don't have in the agreement, we're going to tighten up some of the maintenance, the field's going to be mowed on the same schedule, by the same date set by the fire marshal, so.
Do solar panels start fires?
I'm not, I haven't heard of any. I mean, solar panels are on rooftops all over the nation, in California.
There's a statistic out there online.
And so the solar is replaced, those units are replaced by the provider? It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be costing the city-
During the life of the contract.
14 to 20 million dollars every time they need to be replaced?
During the life of the contract, they own, they maintain, so anything would be replaced-
And after the contract, would they remove them if they didn't want to do it anymore?
That's an option. You could take the field out, the city could say, "Take your stuff and go." The one option is to take on ownership, a lot of agencies do that.
And then if, but we don't have any nuclear plants, do we?
I think the state's shutting those down.
Now, I think thinking outside the box is a bad idea, but I haven't even-
I've thought about nuclear plants, but-
We can't get a solar plant there, I think the people would be up in arms about a nuclear one.
That's all for me.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scott, you asked a few of my questions. So let me just make sure I understand, there's 31,000 meters, 5 million saved. I don't have my calculator, how much, I'm a rate payer, I have a meter, how much am I saving on my bill every month? How much has it reduced, based on this, this project going in place?
I'm going to try to give you a simple answer to a complicated question. So the rates are actually based on fixed, which fixed costs are the ownership of the system and variable. So our fixed and variable costs on the water bill generally are 60, 40 percent. So the rate would be reduced, not by the volume, because volume is just what moves through the meter, the fixed cost. So in my estimation, even a few dollars on a normal water bill, I mean, shouldn't, don't I have a duty to pursue projects to save people money? And I think that it is still a viable project, even if it's not 10 and a half million in savings, if it's five, I feel like I have a duty to the ratepayers to pursue and see it through.
Okay, is this a way of you saying it's only $2, a few dollars saving per bill?
It could be a few dollars, but one of the things we were counting on was, as we moved from, to get approval, we're working on the master plan right now, the master plan for the water system also has coupled to it a financial plan, we're looking at the future water rates, so we were going to plug what we potentially saved into the financial model. So we don't, I don't have an exact number.
Okay, and the solar panels, is there a glare to residents that are right on that hill?
Well, the panels would have to face away from the folks who have been, you know, coming down here to speak, they face south, in order to optimize, you face them south and west. And believe it or not, there's, there's a title of an engineer, he's called a glint here, she's called a glint and glare consultant, that's what they look at. But those panels are designed to absorb, not reflect. So colloquially, you could just go around and look at people's rooftops, stare at the panels as you drive by, and I haven't seen anything that, you know, reflected back in my eyes.
Let me ask it a different way, I feel like, I want you to get real direct with me, because I, it's getting late and my brain isn't working. So, because I don't walk around looking at people's rooftops, so let me just ask you real direct, because I went to the home of somebody that was impacted, so let me just ask you direct. Will the people on that street, facing that hill, and going around to the back of that hill in Rancho Solano, will they see glares from the solar panels from their yards?
I can't see how they would, because St. Andrews, if you're going to the house that I think you've been to, St. Andrews is towards the top of the hill, the panels will be facing, they'll be angled and facing the opposite way.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, I used Google to look up whether solar panels can start fires, and a German company did a study, and is about 1 in 16,667, or 0.006 percent of a solar panel causing a fire. And, but, but environmental factors such as extreme heat, lightning strikes, hailstorms, they could increase the risk somewhat.
So it's low?
It's low. So what do you want to do? There we go.
Yeah, I think the recommendation's just to close the public hearing at this point in time.
Yeah. So, are you all done? Are you good with that? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to-
I do want to say this, you know, it took us a while to kind of get here, while we're closing public comment, but I am really happy that we've left it open this long. I really appreciate you continuing to engage the community and getting feedback from, you know, all types of feedback. And I know that we only needed the seven days or 14 days or whatever type of notice, but I think it's a goal, I like setting a goal standard to say, this is what's legally required, and this is what's right for the community. So anyway, I didn't want to miss that, that I really appreciate.
Very good. At that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Now what?
No further actions needed, thank you.
All righty. So now we are going to, sorry, we're going to turn to a joint meeting of the city council and housing authority. Madam Secretary Clerk, if you would.
The holding of a joint meeting of the city council and housing authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting.
And roll call?
Commissioner Doug Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Doris Pandura?
Here.
Commissioner Scott Tonason?
Here.
Commissioner Rick Picaro?
Here.
Commissioner Kate Patrice Williams?
Here.
Vice Chair Pam Berchani?
Here.
Chair Kat Moi?
Here. Okay, so we're, joint new business of the city council and housing authority, item 12, please.
Item 12, resolution 2024-132 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, authorizing an update to the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget, and updating the five-year capital improvement plan to remove the West Texas Relief Sewer Project and include the Markley Lane Extension, Fairfield Soccer Complex feasibility study, Downtown Street Scape Phase 2, Intersection Corners, and North Texas Street Improvement Projects. Our presenter is Jason Riley, Assistant City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I promise to keep this brief. So my name is Jason Riley, Assistant City Engineer in Public Works. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting you the annual update of the city's capital improvement program. My presentation is broken into three parts, but I promise it will be brief. First, we'll discuss the reallocation of project funding that was presented to the council at your January retreat, and take action on that resolution, and then I'll pause for a moment. Next, I'll provide a brief overview of the capital improvement plan, and then I'll finish the presentation with a preview of capital budget adjustments that will be considered as part of the next agenda item. So each winter, staff reviews the capital improvement plan to evaluate the project needs, budgets, and staff resources. As part of this review this year, it was determined that the West Texas Relief Sewer Project was no longer needed, based on extensive modeling prepared by the sewer district and city staff's concurrence. $3.1 million of that funding, it was available for new projects. In addition, staff resources required for this project would be available for other projects, depending on project complexity. Following the council's discussion, direction was given to staff to reallocate the $3.1 million to four different projects, so I'll go through each of those very briefly, and if you have questions, feel free to stop me. So the first project is the Markley Lane, sorry, Markley Lane Extension, and this, the funding would be used, it's $1.8 million for design, right-of-way, and environmental permitting. This project is a very complex project, simply because we don't own the property, it does have potential biological features on the property that would need to be evaluated for environmental impacts, and the project will require significant coordination with the property owner to allow for future development along the roadway. Completion of the design for this project would allow the city to continue to seek grant funding opportunities for construction, which is currently estimated at $3.2 million. We expect that the design of this project would take 18 to 24 months, using the $1.8 million allocation. So the next project is this feasibility study for a potential new soccer complex. This, this project would study the, and do a sighting analysis of a property owned by Fairfield-Susun Sewer District, south of Cordelia Road and east of the current, current treatment plant. Should the site be suitable for a soccer complex, the feasibility study would result in a 30% level concept plan, and again, we would have the potential grant opportunities that we could seek for the final construction of that project. The cost estimate for the feasibility study was allocated at $350,000. The next project is the Downtown Street Scape Phase 2 project. Funding for this project would be used for design of the improvements at the intersection corners along Texas Street between Pennsylvania Avenue and Jefferson Street. The project would include replacement of landscaping, pavers, accessible curb ramps, and planters. This is a medium-complexity project, and when I, when I talk about complexity, I'm referring to staff resources, so it's the amount of staff resources that would be required. So the design is expected to take 18 to 24 months, and the cost would be $350,000. Again, this, this design would result in a shovel-ready project for potential grant opportunities for construction. And then the fourth project is the North Texas Street Improvement Program. Funding for this project could include programs to improve parking lot lighting, building investments, traffic safety, zoning, property screening, and accessible curb ramps. The final scope for the project has not yet been defined, and staff will continue to work with council to define that scope. That project is expected to be a medium-complexity project for staff resourcing, depending on that final scope. $600,000 would be allocated to this project. So the requested action tonight is to adopt the resolution authorizing the update of the fiscal year 2425 capital budget, update the five-year capital improvement plan to remove the West Texas Relief Sewer Project, and reallocate $3.1 million in funding to add the Markley Lane Extension Project, a feasibility study for a potential new soccer complex, design of the Downtown Street Scape Phase 2 Project, and North Texas Street Improvement Program. So at this point, I'll pause my presentation and allow you to consider the resolution.
Okay, we have any public comments on this one?
No public comments and zero hands raised online, thank you.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a comment.
I guess we'll let you go ahead.
Okay, I know, it's late, but I have to-
No, no, please, any comments are welcome, of course.
Okay, I mean, I've made it pretty clear, my feeling about the soccer complexes, because, I, I mean, I'm there every Saturday, okay, watching the grandkids play soccer.
Right.
And I know that area, I know people in the sewer district have some real issues with that, just because of the, the amount of mosquitoes, mosquito abatement, the location. So I, I mean, if they're going to do, if there's going to be a feasibility study, I would hope that's going to include the mosquito abatement over there, and also, you know, just the quality of the land out there, too. I mean, you know, you are right near the sewer district, I think my biggest concern is the mosquitoes, just because September and October is like the height of the mosquito season, and that's also the height of the soccer season. So you're out there watching, I mean, it could, I don't know, I just don't feel real comfortable with it, but, I mean, I'll approve it, because I know there's going to be a feasibility study, and we'll, and we'll see what, I know, I know Doug and I have had long conversations about this, so. Anyway, that's my comment.
Councilman Tonason, thank you.
So these are ARPA funds, correct?
Correct. They were, they were ARPA funds, so the, the council took action on the consent calendar to reprogram the ARPA funds.
To be clear, earlier on your agenda, under consent, the council took action to accept ARPA funds as revenue loss. Separate and apart, you're reallocating $3.1 million in the capital improvement plan based on projects that were identified previously by council at a study session, that's where this five, five list of projects-
Because I should have asked the first question first, is there a timeframe on the money? Okay, that's all I need.
Councilman Doug?
Yeah, I, on the mosquito, of course, there's some mosquitoes there, I've talked to the people at the current soccer field, and they say there's mosquitoes there as well. I used to hunt out there all the time at the end of this, at Grey Goose, and it wasn't real bad, so I'm looking forward to the-
Feasibility.
Feasibility study and the environmental clearances, so.
Anybody else for comments? All right, did we have a motion or a second? Anybody else for comments? All right. Did we have a motion or a second yet? Well, I'll accept one.
I'll entertain a motion.
He's entertaining, and there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous. Okay, and so now we're going to go to the joint public hearing. Item 13, please.
I'm gonna continue, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna continue my presentation, just to get an, of an update of the capital improvement plan.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
I was trying to shut you down. Sorry, I thought you might forget. Just kidding.
This is important stuff. So now I'll briefly provide you with an update of the capital improvement program. The five-year capital improvement program covers fiscal years 24 through 28. It includes more than 140 projects over those five years totaling approximately $364 million. In 20, fiscal year 2025, 103 projects will be funded totaling $92.7 million. Projects, again, these are just the project categories. They include golf, information technology, parks, public buildings, sewer, streets, transit, and water. Some of the significant projects we've completed during the fiscal year 2024 include the Waterman Boulevard Sidewalk Project, demolition of the Bank of America Building downtown, and improvements to lighting along the Linear Park. As you probably have noticed, there are many other projects that are still in the works, yet to be completed, and that will be wrapping up this summer. In fiscal year 2025, you'll see construction begin on two new fire stations, which is Station 36 along Business Center and Drive, and Station 39 along Peabody Road, the North Texas Street Recreation Center, and the all-inclusive playground improvements at Allenwind Park, among many other projects. So now I'm gonna transition into some of the significant project updates that you'll be considering as part of the next item on the agenda. So these are the projects that have been added and removed. Two projects are being removed, the West Texas Street, or West Texas Relief Sewer, which we just talked about, the Police Department Expansion Project, which during the evaluation of the capital improvement program this year, was determined that that's not needed at this time. However, it's gonna remain in the capital improvement plan and be evaluated annually as we prepare updates to the capital improvement plan. And then there's a few other projects that we'll be adding, East Tabor-Tolinas Sidewalk Gap Closure. We have a federal grant that we received this fiscal year for that project. A couple of projects are related to payments to, like, Green Valley Two Traffic Signals, a payment to a developer for a traffic signal that they installed as part of their development, and this would cover the city, the city's fair share component. South Brook One Valve and Power Upgrades, I-80 Westbound Truck Scales Water Improvements, which is the city's extension of the casing and water line under Free Ray Ramp in preparation for the truck scales, a High Lift Power Room Replacement Project, and the Waterman Admin, Administration Restroom Remodel. So some of the budget adjustments, these are the, the adjustments to existing projects. I highlighted three here. There are others, and they're on page 10 of the next, of the draft mid-cycle budget document in the next, next agenda item. So these three include the 2026 Rancho Solano Pavement Maintenance Project. We're actually advancing funding in this one from '26 to '25 for design, West Texas Water Main Replacement, and the Water Master Plan and Rate Study. So that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Any questions? Apparently not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You, you're rocking and rolling there. So now we're gonna go on to item 13.
Item 13, Joint Public Hearing of the City Council of the City of Fairfield and Housing Authority, adopting Resolutions 2024-133 through 2024-137, Housing Authority Resolution 2024-03, approving the mid-cycle update to fiscal year 2023/2024 in 2024/2025 budget and financial plan. Our presenters are John Fertato, Director of Finance, and Ashley Doyle, Budget Officer.
Good evening, Mayor, wise mayor, and members of the council. I'll try to be as brief as possible, but before I start, I would like to thank our city manager for his great leadership in this budget deficit that we had. He really drove this process for us. Also like to thank my fellow directors. Everyone had to put up their sleeves and really work hard, and my excellent budget team as well. So quickly going over an overview, we'll look at how our general fund forecast looks like, how we've addressed some of the structural deficit, a little bit on the other funds, and adopting some of the resolutions as well as the GAN limit. So here was a timeline. I think this has been the longest budget process we've had. We've engaged council at least nine times in the last one and a half year, and I would like to thank council for your direction and patience with us. It's been a hard process. So looking at the past, last year, when we came to you at this time, we showed one-time use of money, and if we continued with a 20 million structural deficit, we would technically run out of money in 2028. Fast forward to today, at that point, we did do a lot of one-time balancing, so we did not use our reserves in the current budget cycle. We have now taken that to 24 million. So here's how we have balanced the first two years of this budget cycle. We've used some of our IGS money that we had for cybersecurity. We've used broadband to cybersecurity. We've used some of the loan repayments from our redevelopment, and then some of the funds that were overfunded, we are using those fund balances. So technically, in the first, in this two-year budget, we are using 24 million of one-time, and then in the next year, when we adopt, we are forecasting a 9 million deficit. Four and a half of that is gonna come from one-time, and then the rest is basically use of reserves. Now, looking beyond that, in the next five years, if things don't change, we'll use around 42 million of reserves, and then the following year, we'll use 11, and then we are out of money, right? But that whole process has moved us from 28 right up to 31, so we've bought a lot more time. And a lot of cities can't say that because they're in problem today, so great planning. So looking at what we did last year, council told us to do a hybrid approach. So we just used our one-time balancing strategies. We focused on revenue increases already, and also looking at a lot of reductions. And looking at revenue side, we've already presented you with revenue increases, and some of them would need water approval as well. So looking at some of these strategies that were presented, the tick marks represent those we've already done, and some of the rest are really harder to, to do in the future. So I just wanted to also highlight that in the current budget cycle, the city manager had 5% reduction. So we reduced over 5 million in the budget this year, and then last year, we actually reduced four and a half million just to absorb and go with things that went up in costs. So in general, we've almost cut 10 million from our budget in the last two years. Some of the major adjustments, when we adopt this mid-cycle, we are also looking at the year we are in. Our property tax forecast was a big one that went down by 1.2 million. Again, that was because the county had some errors in the rule. And then sales tax, while most cities are seeing a double-digit dip, we've been marginally down in the first year, and then the economy slowing down takes 1.2 away from the year that we are going to adopt. Again, that's because we have a strong manufacturer here that's kept us afloat. And then with all the construction and new things going on, we are seeing the CFDs contribute a little more, so that's helpful. And with utility rates going up, so has the utility tax, so that's a positive for us. Looking at the expenses side, general liability, always a big worry, the number of cases that are getting settled. The pool in the next year is gonna go negative, so we're losing a lot of money there. Again, just looking at some of the items here, fire is gonna be over on overtime, but they do have salary savings to cover it. And the bright side there is that last box on the left. So the department's savings, we are anticipating this year, we anticipate to exceed around a million in savings, so that's gonna help in the future as well. And with that, I conclude my part, and I'll invite Ashley to present the rest of this.
Okay, so where are we? Like John said, we identified a $20 million deficit in the development of last budget cycle, used one-time measures to buy us time. All staff put together strategies on how to develop that and, or decrease that deficit, and those were brought to study sessions to council earlier this year in March and April. And through those efforts, we've been able to reduce the deficit down to 8.2 million and extend the time that we deplete our funds to 2031. Actions taken, again, in fiscal '24, 5.3 million was already adjusted downward to accommodate for additional costs, and at this time, the senior leadership team decided it was appropriate to forego 3% of their scheduled COLA that was due July of this year. And then departments were given direction to show what a 5% reduction to their expenditures looked like. So those were incorporated into this, which a lot of that was accomplished through freezing multiple positions. New revenues were identified, and we're still using one-time measures. So the city manager gave direction to departments to look at their operations and see where they could cut 5% and what 5% would look like. Many of the departments were able to achieve that, and some of the ones, and those were all brought to council in the March and April study sessions, and this represents what council agreed to include in the budget that we're proposing tonight. What didn't get approved was, in order for PD to reach a full 5%, they would have had to reduce another three officers, which would start to impact their ability to respond to calls and services. And at the council study session, council was clear that they were not in favor of that reduction. So that is not included in this proposed budget. This just shows a recap of the last 13 years of our full-time equivalents. Although there are 24 and a half positions being proposed to be frozen, we've added 64 positions over the last, or since 2020. So although we are proposing to freeze a significant number of positions, we are still above the 2022 allocations. Here's a recap of all of the positions that are being proposed to be frozen in this budget. Many of the positions have been adopted in previous budgets but were never filled. Some have been vacant for quite some time, and others are being frozen through operational changes. So especially, you'll see the four police officer positions there, they were able to accomplish that through some strategic operational changes in the way they do their operations, so we'll talk about that. So citywide departments reduced any discretionary spending that they had, reducing training and conferences, consulting services, deciding to do those services in-house, or renegotiating their contracts. Yeah. And then when we get to the Police Department, through the council retreat and the multiple study sessions, it was clear that there, we wanted to take a look on how we strategically target the homeless initiatives that we're working on. So the Police Department has hit and cat, and they're reorganizing that and reducing it down to a targeted two-officer team for the mental health unit, and relying on the homeless services division to find that outreach support in the future. That shifting and reorganization of the hit-and-cat team into this targeted team allows them more officers to be put back onto the patrol unit, which allows them the ability to freeze those four positions, and also implement a patrol shift change, so changing from three 12-hour days to four 10-hour days, which should result in a significant overtime savings of around $1 million a year, and also help the overall health and well-being of our officers. And then in the city manager's office, a lot of homeless initiatives were implemented and being sustained by using one-time COVID money. Those monies have run out, and so the department has strategically looked at how we can administer these funds differently. So they've identified $1.1 million in available one-time funding that was released as a NOFAD for providers to submit proposals, which were being reviewed and will come back to council later this month. And then on Public Works, they accomplished a lot of their reductions through freezing personnel, but they also had to reduce the scope of their future capital projects, just to make sure there's enough funding to continue routine pot, pot hole repairs, and hazardous road repairs, and just ongoing street maintenance. And then Parks and Rec Fund on the Run was eliminated in the budget. That program has been included in the budget, but hasn't been operating over the last few years due to staffing shortages, which we don't anticipate seeing improvement on. So the limited staffing we do have is being prioritized to the after-school and summer programs that are more heavily utilized. In addition to the expense reductions, there was a citywide fee study completed, which identified the cost of services and recommended changes to council, which council previously adopted and go into effect July 8. Council also gave direction to look at modernizing and simplifying our business license tax and increasing our transient occupancy tax. Both of those require voter approval, and a community survey is out to provide data to see if that'll be included in the November ballot. Currently, all of these measures are included in the updated forecast. So this is what the forecast looks like. That yellow line represents where we originally were at, so we have made significant progress by extending our funds to 2031, but we still have a structural deficit. You see that gray line represents our expenses, and the blue line represents our revenues. So our expenses are still exceeding our revenues. This is just another view, kind of, of the structural deficit. The yellow line represents the original deficit, and again, the great work done by council and staff to move that downward to that green line. But we still have a structural deficit. On the other funds, real quick, Transit performed their system-wide evaluation this last year, which gave them direction on how to increase ridership and become more sustainable. That resulted in eliminating some of the unproductive routes, transitioning to microtransit, and moving towards more cost-efficient vehicles. Ridership and fare revenues still are a challenge for them. The state has a requirement of a 20% Fairbox recovery ratio. Last year, Transit was at 5.7%. The state's deferred that requirement till the June of 2026, so we have time, but that is kind of looming out there. And then on the golf side, the bonds were paid off at the beginning of this fiscal year. Touchstone took over operations in January of this year. We're expecting revenues to increase at those courses, but we are giving them some time to figure out the operations and assess the needs, and we'll be bringing back a full picture of the financial plan at the next budget. Like Michael mentioned previously, the Water Master Plan and Rate Study are currently underway. Those will help guide the future capital needs of the water utility plus future rate recommendations. The last water rate increase went into effect over three years ago, so he'll be coming back, I believe, later this year to provide more information on that. And then on the housing side, housing is contributing $1 million towards the Tabor Commons Project, which is a 67-unit project that's targeted to low-income housing with 20 units dedicated to Section 8. Half of that's being funded with state grants. The other half is being funded with housing trust fund money that you guys previously approved a couple years ago.
Sorry, I have an obligation, I think, right now to just let council know. We were contacted by the county today as a part of the Tabor Commons Project. We were contacted by the county today as a part of the Tabor Commons Project. There's 5 million, $4.5 million of county ARPA funds, and they've effectively notified us that they think they're gonna have to reprogram those funds out of that project. We requested if there's alternatives, so I'll be reaching out to county administrator on that, on that project, just because we'd hate to see those funds lost. Unfortunately, that project, I think, in two different tax credit rounds has not, three, in three, three different tax credit rounds, hasn't, you know, met the scoring criteria in order to get funded, so I know Latan and his team are looking at that, and I'll be reaching out to the county, but I just wanted to let council know at this point.
And then just a reminder, housing is heavily reliant on one-time funds, and currently, if more funding isn't identified, their funds will be depleted by fiscal year 2026, but the Housing Department is looking at an inclusionary housing policy to help bring a more sustainable revenue stream going forward. Last item is the GAN limit. The state requires that we adopt a GAN limit. This GAN limit is a way to make sure that taxing agencies' revenues aren't growing in excess of income or population growth. And so you can see our GAN limit is 323 million, and we're currently targeting to be around 111 million, so only using 34% of that GAN limit. And then these are the resolutions that are included for adoption tonight. If you have any questions on anyone in particular, we'd be happy to answer them.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. And are there any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Do you have something to say, Mr. City Attorney?
No.
You look like you were...
I think she's gonna correct. You're gonna...
No, just that there's, although there's five listed here, there are six resolutions.
So just to clarify, you're gonna be, you can consider taking action on five resolutions as a city council, 2024-133 through 137, and then as the Housing Authority, Housing Authority Resolution 2024-03, you can take it all in one motion?
All six of them?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Any, anybody have any comments or anything on this? If not, I will... Starting back with the parks? Let's go back to the parks. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Yes.
Moved?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Oh, you guys did it, and thank you, staff and everybody. Anyway, that's it until June 18th, so we'll see you back at the same bat station. Thank you all. Thank you for the closed session, thank you for everything.